And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
At this point in time, I would entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda. So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing that. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved?
Second.
For the record, the proposal session amended.
Right. Any discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing that. Announcements? Want to do those, Jamie?
Certainly. A public hearing before the planning commission is scheduled for Thursday, June 28th, for consideration of ordinance number 247 regarding requiring individuals designed to conduct a marijuana production operation or recreational marijuana business to obtain a conditional use permit.
Do we have a timeline on that?
That will be at 5:00 or 6:00? 6:00 P.M.
Okay.
There will be a public hearing before the city council on Wednesday, July 11th, 2018 regarding the same ordinance 247. And that'll be a regularly scheduled city council meeting, which begins at 6:00 P.M. On July 17th, 2018, Dune City is hosting a FEMA workshop on common problems, suggested solutions, investment management practices related to construction of residential structures on the Pacific Northwest coast. The workshop lasts from 8:30 in the morning until 4:00 in the afternoon.
Thank you. Any questions for Jamie? Old business? City's building program?
In your packets this evening is a copy of the letter that we received from the Building Coast Division where they have rescinded the prior letter and notice and rescinded the prior temporary ruling and entered a new ruling, a new set of rules, and extended us a year within which to comply.
And this one for what?
I'm sorry?
This was for what?
The Building Coast Division had entered a ruling saying that by July 1st, we had to hire a building official and two inspectors.
Right. So thank you to us and ten other cities for quietly along to make that happen. Reeves versus Dune City.
It's in your packets. You'll see that the matter has been set for trial for September 5th at 9:30 in the morning if we don't accomplish settlement before then.
Do you guys have the information on the settlement?
We're waiting to hear from somebody's attorney.
Well, yes. There's, yeah, I don't know if you guys have seen.
No, it's not in there, the proposal, the proposed settlement, no.
Probably should get that out to everybody. I would have to see it out there.
Okay.
Okay, now we're the citizen input on items not listed on the agenda. Bob Pyne, you wish?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm the chairman, members of the council, city staff, guests. My name is Bob Pyne. I'm here representing the Central Oregon Coast Amateur Radio Club. And I'm here to invite you to join us for the annual Field Day event that Amateur Radio will be putting on this year, Saturday, the 23rd of June, starting at 11:00 in the morning and going 24 hours to Sunday at 11:00 A.M., same location. The purpose of the event is to show that amateur radio can provide emergency communications in the event that all else fails. If the fire station falls down, if all of the buildings fall down with our equipment in it, we can still set up in a vacant lot across from the fire station on emergency power and run 24 hours, which basically shows we can keep going more than just an hour of a drill. It's, we'll go all night long talking to radio stations across the United States and Canada. There will be about 20, no, actually, there were 4,700 different groups participating in this event last year, as I said, all across the United States and Canada, trying to contact each other using any means available. If you come down, we'll have a booth on how to get a ham radio license, at the, we'll answer questions on ham radio and why it's important in a disaster to have one. We'll show you and be demonstrating by making contacts with everything from a Morse code station to a voice station to the latest digital stations. And we'll be able to, you'll be able to see what it is we can do in the event of a disaster and why we say that if all else fails, amateur radio gets through. We'll be your backup communications in the event of a disaster here. So, please come down. As I said, it's going to be a 24-hour operation anytime during there, and it's Highway 101, so you can't miss it.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, thank you.
Is it Schneider, Jerry Schneider?
Yeah, I'll pass, thank you.
Aaron Bowden.
Bowden. Well, I'll try to keep this brief. I live at Little Bohink. My name's Aaron Bowden. And this is, I'm going to ask the city council for guidance on how it's, how it wants that citizen ready to proceed. I just went through an interesting merry-go-round with law enforcement, regulations, ordinances, and things like this. On Memorial Day, we had a dog that was attacked viciously in my neighborhood, and we ended up spending three days looking for the injured dog. You've probably seen the signs up around for it. The person who owned the dog that did the attack, he's been wandering our neighborhoods, several dogs, actually, there's about six of them. And they're large dogs, but they're not ever contained. And my property is fenced, I have gates. I've gone out and made friends with the dogs, just to kind of, so I know who they are and they know who I am and things. But my neighbors, my friends who come over, my wife, they're very nervous, especially when you go open the gate and try to drive out and come in. As soon as they hear the gate, they come barreling down there, barking, yelling, and you know, basically threatening our people who are visiting, and my wife. And so after this attack last, a week ago, I went to, lived on the ordinance codes in Dune City, 178, I discovered there was all sorts of information there. Then later, I found out it had been repealed in February 2017, for some reason. Lane County has dangerous dog ordinances in the books, but they have no jurisdiction in here because Dune City has never requested those services from Lane County. I went to the sheriff's department, they said the same thing, they can't do anything, it's up to Dune City. And I've been told more than once in this merry-go-round, to just go ahead and shoot the dog. I'm not comfortable shooting somebody's pet. I don't want to do that. I don't want to have to do that. So I'm asking, how do you want your citizens to proceed if you've taken this ordinance off the books, but you've never allowed Lane County to have jurisdiction over here? I don't know what we're supposed to do. So I'm leaving it in your hands. Thank you.
I have a comment. Our, Lane County should have jurisdiction. And I think what Aaron has just stated is that they have jurisdiction, but that it's up to us to ask them to enforce, to enforce the law with, relative to dogs. I'm unclear, I, I've never heard that before. We got rid of our, we repealed that law in February because we just don't have the teeth to enforce it. We, we don't have trained people. We don't have a vehicle like Florence does to put a dog inside. At that time, it was a leash law, but nobody seemed to care about putting their dog on a leash. And it was basically a staffing thing and a money thing. We just, we just don't have the resources to do it. So my understanding was that Lane County's restrictions or laws were always there and still there. So I may be wrong, if, if, Aaron, you're saying that we need to request Lane County to enforce the law? I don't know. Jamie, do you have a comment on that?
Lane County's position, we received a letter from Lane County after the last issue on dogs, and their position is they will only enforce it if we enter into an IGA and pay for the officer to do the work.
Do you have an idea what that would cost?
No, I don't. The only way to find out would be to issue, you know, make the request.
It would be extensive, I would guess.
All I can do is ask, I can ask if you instruct me to ask, otherwise I can't.
You have a comment?
I have to really ask.
Yeah, this is something that we can't just let sit, right?
Okay, we'd be happy to do that.
Absolutely. Because it shouldn't be terribly expensive on a per-case basis, we don't need.
Not if it's our case. But if it's somebody to sit here or patrol the area, it could be a totally different deal.
I don't think we want that.
On call.
Just complaint-driven.
Hour and a half drive away. Especially since last, I think the last time, the special meeting that we had with law enforcement, they acted like any serious violation, they would be here, you know, as soon as they could. I mean, they did, they never said otherwise, and I would think of a vicious dog attack would fall under that kind of timeframe. But if you will check with Lane County, I'll, Aaron, I'll personally check with Sheriff Trapp and find out where the miscommunication is or misunderstanding is. Thank you. I imagine that type of thing is going to reoccur periodically, so we ought to know how to deal with it when it does. Thank you for bringing that up, Aaron. No one else? All right. Moving on to new business. Volunteer of the Year.
We have received a nomination to nominate Stan Anderson and Anne Gough. Is it Gough or Goff? Goff, excuse me. Gough, as the volunteers of the year. I will read the nomination form. Anne and Stan are the new Boy Scout Camp Baker managers. This year, they were instrumental in bringing 20 Boy Scouts and team elders to the annual, or excuse me, team leaders, to the annual Oregon Dunes Triathlon. These 20 volunteers helped Dune City meet the minimum number of volunteers required for the first time in the history of the event. Anne and Stan were tireless recruiters and then provided outstanding organizational and logistical talent to make sure the scouts knew where and when to report and what to do. This isn't all they do. They volunteered a lot, for a lot of it. So no, they have been nominated, that's the only nomination form we have received, and we're supposed to issue this by June, June 30th, so.
So we probably ought to get to it. So do I have a motion to accept this nomination for Stan Anderson and Anne Gough? So moved?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There we have it.
Thank you.
Presentation of the award for volunteers for Dune City Triathlon. I believe that is actually Central Oregon Coast Amateur Radio Club. They have a, Bob, if you accept this, I think we have a check for you for $250. Oh, I appreciate it more, I didn't have to volunteer. All right, small city allotment agreement for award of ODID grant.
We have received the agreement from the state that we need to sign in order to receive the $50,000 grant for the work on the drainage and paving and widening of Huckleberry Lane. And I'm just asking for permission to, I see. Who's signature, is it everyone's?
Do you have a motion to?
I do. It's me, it's my signature, so.
Yeah, it's your signature.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing that? So they've signed it, Jerry?
All right, thank you. You want to move on to the next item?
Yeah, you may.
Okay. As many of you know, and certainly one counselor I know can attest, the location of the meters that are required to be read every month by our residents associated with the shared domestic water supply is sometimes not easily accessible. In fact, we have one house where it's actually in the crawl space under the house, and the woman's in her late 80s. And so she has a difficult time making that monthly meter read. Well, having worked with South Coast Water District on the project that they are working on right now, he turned me on to this guy that has the information on replacing the meters with meters that we can just drive by with a special software program laptop in the car, and it will feed those meter readings into the laptop, and we can do that in a matter of a couple of hours, one afternoon, a month, and nobody would have to read them anymore. The problem is, at this point, we have about 300 meters that would need to be replaced. The cost for purchase and acquisition of the meters, each meter would be about $300, including the cost of the meter and the labor associated with installation. But to buy the software and the computer and all that stuff that we would need to do that is this proposal that's in your account, in the packets tonight. I'm trying to find the page with the numbers on it. I want to, I want to say it was $5,000?
No, that was $20,000.
$3,000, sorry. $3,137.78. And again, the cost for the meters would be over and above that, and we would need to talk about that. First of all, I would like to at least, the agreements that people sign for shared domestic water supply says they will replace the meters. But I'm not, we need to talk about that. We need to figure out where is the convenient, convenience worth it to the homeowners? Is it actually for our convenience? Do we split the cost somehow? We need to talk about that. I personally would at least like to take the names of everybody that sends me their meter readings every month, put them in a hat and draw one, and give them one.
Why don't you give a quick little description, if you will, on why it is important that we have those meter readings?
All right. Under our comment with the state, we are required to report meter readings on a monthly basis. Now, we have to report it at the end of the year, so we only have to do it once a year. But though, when I report, I have to have your meter readings for every single month. And the reason for that is when the time comes for certification, they use those numbers to determine how much we are actually using. And if they just go with, you know, I'm supposed to get .5 CFS a year, nobody ever really uses that much. And they have gotten, they're crunching it down, they're screwing it down so that it's tighter and tighter on water usage, so that we know exactly what's being used. And if you don't report the meter, the next time we go for an extension, which is, the next one, I think is 2021, the water master has indicated if you can't curb usage, we're going to knock them off, and you're not going to be able to deliver them anymore. So it becomes really important that we have those water meter readings on a regular basis.
Jamie, I'm sorry, does this apply only to lake water, or does it apply to all, like, wells?
No, it only applies to those people who use our water, the city's water right.
Right.
Under the shared domestic water supply program. And like I said, that's about 300 people right now, so. Well, actually, it's not that many people. There's 300 reservations, which is the other thing. The people who have reservations need to act on those reservations.
Okay.
Lake water?
Bohink Lake water.
Okay. And is there a cost to the city of reading these meters? Somebody, who pays for that person to go around and crawl under the?
The city does. The city pays. Once a year, we pay for somebody to go read all of the meters.
Okay.
But it would be easier if every, I mean, that, that helps, but with so many absentee owners, we don't always have the ability to get in to read that meter. And if we can replace it with something that all we have to do is drive by within two miles of the building and have it downloaded to our computer, it would be a major convenience for everybody.
And could this be done piecemeal? I know the software has to be purchased all at once, but could we take 50 and replace them this year and 50 next year?
Yes.
Okay.
Just not sure how, what that would look like. Would we go with the ones like the poor woman who's got to climb under our house and look for the ones that really need to be done right away? Or, or do we say, hey, if you want to buy it yourself, we'd be more than happy to get that in and add it to the list for people who want to get it sooner than when we get around to it.
Comment? This invoice, or whatever you want to call it, spells out the, it's a 5/8ths by 3/4 M.J. water meter, et cetera. I suspect there are quite a few residents that don't have that meter now.
That size, you mean?
That size.
I know there are. There are some that have larger.
Okay. I do have, that I've got a newer home. The question is, are there other meters that this system, this software, would work with? Number two, it spells out a Mag mount antenna. I guess, you know, most people don't have metal harness, so we're, it talks about an antenna whip and would have to be mounted, I assume, on the roof somewhere.
No, that, that antenna is on.
The meter?
No, it's on the box, it's on the computer. The computer comes in a box and, yeah, the meter itself will send from where, where it is.
Okay.
And just to address your concern about the different sizes, the same meters are available in a larger size for those who need it, but most, the majority of our meters are the 5/8 inch at this point, so that's why he quoted that.
Where would this fit into our budget, or would it?
Yes, we, you know, we, we charge the administration fee every year. And the administration fee covers the cost of the meter reader and for data entry and for the reporting that we have to do to the state. But it does have extra, and that is there now. And if it, if you guys approve the use of those funds for that purpose, we did budget for that in this last budget. This year, it was in the protect resources or something along those lines, or I don't remember what it is exactly, the line, I don't know, but we left $10,000 in there just in case. And it was to go for stuff associated with the weir and installation of the metering device on Bohink Creek and that kind of thing. And this would be one of those.
Jamie, how much does it, do we pay the person? I'm just wondering what payback would be if we put the system in place? What would be the payback for the city?
We pay him $2,500 right now, $2,500 a year to, to go out there that one time. And it takes him about a month to get them all. And he can't read them all. I mean, there's always some that you can't get to because the people live in wire.
Jamie, if I do this, did this calculation correctly, if we, let's say we have $10,000, and $3,000 of it goes to the computer equipment, we could only do within that budget about 20 meters at $300 each. Am I doing the math right here?
Yes.
Okay. And so it would, it would almost have to be the worst cases and then moving forward in the future.
I do think there would have to be some sort of prioritization.
Yeah.
Or the opportunity for people, if they want to get it done, to come forward and pay for themselves.
That's kind of my thought. If people are reporting themselves correctly, I don't see any, I mean, I don't see it being conceded by the units, if people want to buy the units and then not have to deal with self-reporting, what they do after, the city has to do it once a year to double-check, right?
We will have to go out and either read the meters or use, use these.
Either way, we have to do it once a year.
That's more for confirmation.
Yes.
We double-check what the reports are because, well, we double-check what the reports are. Sometimes, especially if there are people who live out of state, we compare last year's with this year's, and if it looks like they're, you know, they're only using the house three months of the year, but all of a sudden the water use is outrageous, then we can advise them that there may be a leak.
So if we're only going to do this once a year with, let's say, with this, with the new components, let's say that we had to put it all in, would then people still have to report it monthly?
No, because we would have it.
So there is, there's really no requirement to report it monthly, other than our requirements so that we can match it to the year end?
Well, the state requires it.
State requires what?
Right. We have to submit, at the end of the year, we have to submit the year's monthly reports to each.
So then there is a requirement to do it monthly?
Yes.
So then what we're talking about is doing this monthly and annually?
Correct. That's what we've been doing.
The annual being basically an audit?
Well, yeah, except for where we don't have measurements. We then take that annual number, calculate it from the annual number from the prior year, and divide that number by 12 and say, that's what everybody's using. What we know is not true, but we have to put a number in there if the number is different, if it's showing usage.
Okay, so what I'm trying to get at is that if we're the ones with the meeting, then we're going to have to do monthly readings and annual meetings. You said that we're paying this person $2,500 a year to do the annual.
Right, but we would not have to do that if all of the meters are installed. We would only have to do annual meetings on those houses that don't have the meter that I can just drive by. I do drive-bys all the time anyway, throughout the whole city.
If the state requires monthly and, and annual, regardless, in my, unless I'm missing something.
No, no, the only reason we do that annual is, yes, to audit, but to catch those that don't report monthly, which is the majority of people. The majority of people are not submitting the monthly reports in. And a lot of the cost associated with it is the input of the data by the person.
Right.
You know, when they, when we do get the reports.
So then the annual goes away?
It could go away.
Well, I'm there.
If all of the meters are in, then yeah, it goes away all, all, yes.
That's my point. If everything was in, if the annual was.
Yes, the annual would not be necessary because we have it. Yes, the annual would not be necessary because we have it.
Thank you.
Could it be a situation where the people who are not reporting bear this cost?
That's up to you guys.
That, I'm kind of laying that one myself.
Do you think everyone is, is clear on their reporting requirements? Or are this the people, I didn't think so.
No, I don't think so. Because properties sell, city is never notified if a property sells. Nobody bothers, although on the lien search, we are putting on there, this is Dune City, this house uses a Dune City water right. They have to come in and sign an agreement with Dune City. Nobody's showing up, rarely do they show up. So yeah, there's that, that issue.
It just seems to me like this would be a great investment for the H.D. population. Unless you're different than I am, you're all getting older. It seems like a polite avenue to pursue.
I just don't know whether to, I like your idea about that. That's, I might explore that a little bit, Tom, and see. Because it would require a change to code.
But, you know, they would have the choice maybe of bearing this cost, as H.D. Fowler lays out here as an example, or hiring a kid to go down into the crawl space, give him 20 bucks and read the meter. Or 10 bucks or whatever. That may be the much cheaper way to go. I, I, I just have trouble with the city stepping up to the whole thing, bam. And I assume the funds are the $100 a year that we pay?
Right.
That that's where the funds are coming from?
What I would like to see is a little more, I've read this, I've looked at their quote. I'd like to, you know, I don't, the rest of you, I'd like to see a much more detailed one. How many, how many of the people are we getting on a monthly basis that are consistent? How many are we not? What, what are the actual installation costs? I mean, this, this is buying the meter, but then it also have to be installed. Well, didn't you include that, Jamie, in your 300?
The 300, the meter is $180.
See, all I have in front of me is $180, $96.
Yeah, it's 300 total. I talked to the guy that does the installation. And then he said, because most of it's already there, it's just a matter of changing out the, the meter. He figured 300 total had caught, covered.
So, well, and depending on where the meter is, it's going to be different going under our house than it is for somewhere else. But I like, I kind of like the idea. I would like to, but I'm kind of with everybody else. I don't want to see the full burden if, if part of it is fault, part of it is homeowners. But at the same time, I don't think we mandate a homeowner to update 200, you know, latest technology just out of, out of convenience either. That's just not, not something we should be doing.
Another thing I would think about would be other systems, of course, but also if the city invests $3,000 in a reader and 20 people buy the units, now we're locked into it, I can see the price of the units going up.
Won't lock it in.
Guaranteed on the cost of the units for a time.
And as we know, software changes.
Exactly. And our, this is going to live until the next new thing comes out.
True. Jamie, did we, did we happen to talk to Mike Miller in Florence? They, they do this, they actually do the readings by handheld. I'd kind of like to know what they're using, what they think of what they're using, you know, the vendor that they're using. I'm trying to think, they changed, when I lived in the city, they changed it over maybe three years ago or so. And they did it in progression. But I don't know, of course, don't know the vendor that they used and how well that's working for them. But I'd like to kind of see their, hear their input on that, on it as well. It'd be interesting too, to know if we're, if we're contacting this person, if, if we could find out whether the city financed it or the residents financed it, or there was some shared agreement. Do you know that?
There's a different setup though.
Is it, okay.
Well, yeah, because they're a city.
Well, yeah, a lot of taxation going on.
They treat the water and all that. They're a public utility.
But no, I don't remember paying for it. Okay. Well, not literally with one check. Yeah. Might have been folded into a monthly bill.
Okay, I'll explore that one.
Yeah, please, thank you. But yes, I think it's, I think it's definitely something we need to look at and get as much information as we can.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, well, we're going to go into a series of resolutions here, so bear with me on this. Which one?
The corrections department sent the update.
Let's skip one.
Yeah, I mean. They just raised their rate a little bit.
Oh, the agreement with Shutter Creek?
Yes. We don't use them very often, but when we do, it's nice to have the agreement there.
What do we have to do?
We have to clean up City Hall on more than one occasion.
For those who don't know, what we're talking about is, we have the agreement, annual agreement with Shutter Creek, Correctional Institute down the road. And they supply, to different organizations, they supply labor, supervised labor. And I only know that because when I was at the port, we, we used them frequently for manual labor for big projects, and I just couldn't get to it.
When I say clean, I don't mean inside, I mean outside.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, you've got to have their roof floors.
This isn't Camp Florence, is it?
No.
Different, different place, I don't know where this one is.
These are adults.
Almost a reed square, I think.
Yes. I think it's almost a goose bed.
But it's, what, $590 for eight hours of work up to 10 inmates at a time? I mean, that's pretty inexpensive labor. And my experience with them is they've been very good. Never had an issue with it, no. So anybody have a problem with Jamie signing this agreement? It's, looked like it went from Yeah. From $5.40 to $5.80. And then it's just in place, Jamie, if and when you need it.
Right. Right. Right now, at this time, I see nothing. I mean, maybe if the grant is approved, the trail.
I make a motion to go forward with the agreement.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? We'll go further. All right, resolution. 2018 number 6, 06-15, 2018. Resolution adopting the 2018, 2019 fiscal budget year.
No.
I get it.
You're on item F, number nine regarding city services.
Okay, then these are our.
This one doesn't require a public hearing, so.
Oh, it's got script written next to it.
I think I gave you script.
This is it. There's script written.
Do we have that?
Yes.
You do?
I do.
You mean you do?
You're right.
I don't know, she makes my book, technically, she makes hers.
This is the resolution clarifying that Dune City provides for
Oh, okay. Yep, got it.
And architecture, street construction maintenance, lighting, storm sewers, and planning zoning subdivision.
Got it.
I'm looking to be approved for, adopt this.
Second.
Wait for one second. Do we supply all of them?
Yes.
I have a question. Storm sewers, where does that water go? Do we actually have a sewer system piping?
No, no, it's, they call it storm sewers. Actually, if you read it, it's called drainage. And that's what we have, we have drainage. Read the letter of the law.
There was this. And there was a second. So we're just all in favor?
Aye.
Who was the second?
No, I didn't second it, I thought you did, Ellen.
I think Ellen did.
Oh, I did.
I think so. Any opposed? All right, so it's approved. No days.
Ordinance 248, first reading.
Are you sure?
That's the amendment to to chapter 120?
Yes.
All right. So, resolution adopting the fiscal year budget?
No. Ordinance 248.
What were you meant?
First reading.
I've got all your scripts, but Jamie.
I gave them to you in the morning.
You don't, here's the scripts.
At the very top, it should, it should say ordinance 248.
First resolution.
Nobody's got that.
Oh, the whole script. Down there. All right, first reading of ordinance 248. Proposed ordinance requires two readings before it is enacted. City Charter 34.3 provides both readings may be read by title only. If no council member presents at the meeting, request it to be read in full or if a copy of the ordinance is provided for each member and all requirements are posted and advertisement had been met. Does any council desire to have the ordinance read in full? If not, I'll entertain a motion to read the ordinance by title only. So move.
Turn it back.
If the second and the vote is unanimous, then I will read the ordinance by 248 by title only. Ordinance made in Charter, chapter 120 of the Dune City Code of ordinances entitled business licenses to apply to all businesses doing business within the city limits. We have any discussion?
With regard to the section two repeal of section 120 dot 75, shall not affect any action occurring, et cetera. What does section 120 dot 75 of chapter 120 say?
That section restricted enforcement of the business license requirement only to licensed contractors.
Now it's meaning, they don't have to be licensed, just doing business?
Just anybody doing business. That was the instruction I received from the council in the goal-setting session.
And the fee is $85 per year?
Per year.
And is that calendar year or does it run 12 months from?
It runs 12 months from issuance and somebody tracks that. But we only send our reminders once a year.
So that's probably every business?
Every business.
Jamie, could you just clarify for me? Because I'm, just as, as, I was curious, as Tom was, about the businesses affected. But, and I'm seeing the repeal part, but where is the actual substance of what we're approving?
In the code.
In the code. So all we're doing is the code remains the same, but we're repealing this particular
Section.
piece of it so that it now applies to?
Everybody.
Oh, okay, that makes sense.
That's the way, it was written just for that purpose. So that if someday
Okay.
the city council chooses to have the business license apply to everybody like it does say for in the city of Florence, then that would be what they would, that was what you'd do. Just repeal that one little section instead of having to go back and redo the whole thing. Because it was written to apply to everybody with that one little clause that says, but for right now, it's only going to be as to contractors.
Our forefathers were wise.
Thank you.
One question that may come up from the citizenry, I anticipate, is if we require this for everyone who does business, in other words, collects a check from someone in Dune City, does that include the high school kid next door that mows your lawn for 20 bucks? There's got to be a line drawn in the sand somewhere.
Are they registered as a business?
Well, I don't
Probably not.
Probably not. But, but we're saying here, sounds like everyone's going to pay, regardless of license.
Perhaps the thing to do would be, and, and you can certainly table this if you want. I'd hope that we would start the new fiscal year with the increase, but it can wait. We budgeted, we probably will budget for it if you approve the budget this evening. And then you can go on to the website or I can provide each of you with a copy of what it says so that you can see, the businesses are listed, the types of businesses are listed in the existing code. You all have a codebook at home, it should all be in there.
Okay.
And that way it would be clear, more clear to you, should answer that question.
Because my take on anything like that is if you have a business license, that's what we're talking about. But if the business does not require a business license, then you're not going to. If people that have business licenses. One of the reasons I thought that it would be appropriate is that we have people coming from Eugene doing business in, in Dune City and surrounding areas, and they don't have a business license in our city. They don't have one in Florence because Florence requires them to have one. But we don't, and, you know, they're, they're delivering propane, they're doing, you know, they're doing construction work. They're doing, you know, for service type of work and they're in our city and we don't know anything about them. Or even if they're, you know, we really need to know that they're here and what work they're on, doing, so that we understand, you know, what they are doing in our city. And it just, to me, it only makes sense.
That did you? I mean, it's up to you, you want to table it till next time, that's my duty.
I still think we need that dividing line. You know, again, the kid next door that mows your lawn. The way this is worded, it sounds like anyone doing business in Dune City, collecting a check or cash for whatever service, for whatever reason, must get a license. And, and there has to be more clarification. So my opinion is that needs to be done. But I, I can just see it turning into a nightmare.
I just think you should read the rest of the code.
Okay.
So that you can see what the restrictions are and what the requirements are. There has to be proof of insurance and all kinds of other stuff that qualifies them as business, so.
I make a motion to table this until they can investigate further. I agree with Tom.
So moved.
Or something.
Or something.
Any other discussion? Anybody? All right, all in favor of table?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. And I would please read your codes. Let's come back and take a look at this next one. All right, our ordinance. 249, first reading. 249, proposed ordinance requires two readings before it is enacted. City Charter, section 34.3 provides both readings may be read by title only. If no council member present at the meeting requests it to be read in full or if a copy of the ordinance is provided for each member and all requirements of posting and advertisements have been met. Does any counselor desire the ordinance to be read in full? Hearing none. I would entertain a motion to read the ordinance by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes.
All right, I'll read the ordinance 249 by title only. Ordinance amending the Charter 141 of Dune City Code of Ordinances entitled Erosion and Sediment Control by adding provisions that will apply to all residents' construction within the city limits. Discussion?
Mayor?
Yes. The old code, or the present code, exempts residential properties located within the city limits. It doesn't... It talks about land disturbances that comprise an area greater than 4,000 per feet or propose to move more than 50 cubic yards of material, etc. What this does is get rid of that and includes all residential properties located within the city limits. I think this is overreaching. I think that the present code that we have is sufficient. This new ordinance also includes, in addition to the engineer that we currently have, Dave Mortier. He is an engineer. And when you buy a permit, you're doing all of these things that are supposedly in compliance with what we want to do. This new case involves, in all due respect, it involves our city administrator, our newly hired permit lady, Denise, and then, of course, our public works guy, who's experienced in public works, there's no question about it, he's a nice guy. But he's not an engineer. And I see this as duplicitous, because we already have the law in code, in effect. But now we're saying, okay, we're going to make it more restrictive, because we're going to include all residential properties. We are going to stack on top of the city... The engineer that we... Third-party engineer, Dave Mortier. Stack on top of that, our staff. We don't, in my opinion, have the money for all of that. And again, in all due respect, I don't believe that they're necessarily qualified to look at some of these complicated issues. We get involved with these drainage trenches that is mentioned in this new code or new ordinance proposal. And that's already done with the permitting. The engineer that goes and inspects your property is going to look at things like that. And I know firsthand, by going through it now, myself. So I don't like it.
I agree with you, Tom, because I'm going through it now too, and we've already been inspected by Dave Mortier, who is very knowledgeable. And that was my concern also, was... He's very... He's the engineer. I'm not sure that anyone else in the office is qualified to look at this. And it really needs an engineer to look at slopes and areas of things.
That's fine. NOAA, however, now requires that we can no longer let that drainage run into our streets. And so, the idea was to get the sewage trench in place, so that we can make sure that nobody connects... If you drive down Clear Lake Road right now, you can see everybody's roof drains are going on a pipe straight into the street, into the drainage alongside the street. That's not allowed anymore. And the cities are required to do something about it. So we were suggesting, I just want the drainage trenches, catch your roof drain stuff and put it in here. In the past, the city has put that as conditions for approval of subdivisions, and then not enforced it. And no, Dave Mortier does not enforce this. This is not a Dave Mortier issue. Nowhere did I see that an engineer had to do this. I didn't see that in there on residential, on commercial, yes. On big processes, yes. But the main thing was to try and keep the water from the roofs and from the properties draining into the streets and the street drainage system, because they go straight to the lake.
Sure.
If this ordinance is...
It seems to me that this is not retroactive.
No, right, it's from this point forward.
We want to make sure that the new construction, not construction that's happened in the past.
Right.
But the new construction is going to be better in compliance with what we would like to have to keep our lake breathable.
It would be from this point forward, it was not retroactive then.
Is that not already a requirement of building permits?
Sure. Yes, it is.
Absolutely.
It's already required. We have to do this. It is duplicative of what I had to do, even though I don't have to do it. But what I saw in here was asking for a pre-construction meeting and things like that is just really, I felt it was not necessary, because it's already done when the plans come into the office.
I think it's overreaching, and...
Construction permit.
Gee. If you look at item number 2 under 141.023, Drainage Plan on Residential Properties, it says that prior to land disturbances of any kind, file a residential drainage plan identifying the measures that will be installed, used, and maintained in perpetuity. The perpetuity is... I just have trouble with that. And that's just a very small part of this thing. Bottom line, I think it's overreaching and it's duplicitous. We have our permits, we pay for our permits, we pay for inspections. And we've... That seems to have looked better than that.
Jamie, could you address the issue of whether this is already a process that's... I'm sensing that there's a reason that we need this.
Yes, there is a reason. Number one, we are not told. People come in and say, start clearing, go. Nobody bothers to come in. Step one. And you guys addressed that, because you said in the goals that we would need to make a system that would make sure people notify us before they do take any action. And so, we're always playing catch-up and being sued.
I was going to say, we have lawsuits because of drainage problems.
Because the drainage was not issued.
Right.
It's not properly addressed. But it's up to you guys. You guys are the ones to make the decision. NOAA has threatened that they will be fining people. I don't know when, I don't think it's going to happen overnight by any means, and certainly not Dune City first on their list. Because, you know, we're so far down on protocol. But they intend to fine, in the future, cities that are not compliant.
Sure. May I say another word here? I'm... I don't know whether this is the exact wording that's appropriate. I can't speak to that. But what I can say is that in the time that I've been in Dune City and on the city council, I'm certainly aware of drainage issues that have come up, of problems that we've had. And I think they need to be addressed. And I think they need to be addressed proactively rather than retroactively. So I'm personally very much in favor of doing something along these lines, whether this is exactly it. Again, I can't tell you. But I think we do need to address this issue.
Mayor?
Yes.
From what Jamie said, the issue is homes that are already built that are draining down roads or into the lakes.
Into the drainage ditches.
Correct. Any new construction is already taken care of through the permit and permitting process now. So I don't see what is written in here would take care of the concern that Jamie's seeing that's already here in the city.
Sure. Jamie, under what... When somebody comes in to get a building permit, what sort do we play, if any, in determining that the construction and the process and the movement of dirt and the way the housing is to be placed in as far as drainage and ditches and things like that? Do we play a part in that now?
No, and neither does Mr. Mortier. The only time Mr. Mortier gets involved is if there's more than five dump truck loads of dirt intended to be moved. And I have yet to somebody... Well, that's not true. I have one time heard somebody actually admit that's how much dirt they were going to move. Because our permit says, how much? And we leave it to them to fill out. If they come in and get one in the first place.
But so, you're saying that nothing as far as drainage runoff or anything is addressed?
No, and to this day, new home construction, gutters are being put in to draft out to the ditches in the street. It's still going. Because that is common practice. It's been common practice for many, many, many years.
Sure. Assuming there's a ditch.
Yeah, assuming there's a ditch.
I would say, since I'm building a new home, that Dave Mortier did come out, make sure we had things. We did put in the cisterns as this thing says, you know, there's no drainage out to the ditch. And Dave Mortier made sure that ours did not. So my experience is very different.
Tom?
This ordinance is... Applies, or would apply to all residential properties.
No.
New.
New construction.
New construction, okay, fine. All new residential property construction. I suggest that we, if there's a problem and dirt running on the streets or whatever, that that be addressed individually, not by an ordinance that applies to everybody. I mean, this is assuming... The ordinance almost implies that you're not going to obey the law or build to code, or do things by code. Dave Mortier's been out to my house a jillion times, and I had the same experience as Counselor Snow. He's very on top of stuff, in my opinion.
Would a different inspector be the same? I mean, I don't think this implies that somebody's going to violate the code. I think what this says is, this is an important issue, and we need to make sure that it's addressed, not only for the drainage issues, but also, I believe Jamie is saying, we need to address this because we have a responsibility to another agency. Is that right? Yes. And Jamie's correct. And we were setting our goals as that we wanted to get more in touch with the contractors, building contractors, because we were... As my experience has been, with our house that we built, they were not down here enough. When they were here, they didn't have the right information. It was not a well-coordinated effort, if you will. So I... While I certainly believe we need to figure out how to get them here and how to get our staff the exact information that they need and when they need it. Drainage is an issue. It's an issue in many places around our town. I think we're... I do think with this verbiage that we're kind of overreaching. I agree. But we need to fill the holes. We need to fill those holes where they're at, no pun intended, of where the gaps are in our code writing. I don't know that it needs to be this... Quite this overreaching. I think some massaging of that code might need to take place, but not as dramatic as this may seem on the surface. I don't know about the rest of you. I would like to see this massaged a little bit before we throw it out and/or take it into the second reading. But I would like... My personal opinion is, Jamie, I'd like to see you go back and massage some of the wording of the existing code to see if we can't come out with a little less overreaching, but yet a little more binding, a little more coordination. It would bring these inspectors and these contractors into the office with the right type of... I don't have an objection to that, as long as we're not letting this issue drop and as long as we have a reasonable period of time and not just let this extend for months and months. I think if we could address this at the next meeting with some revised wording, I think that would be fine.
I agree with Counselor Or.
The number one on this first page, see, part of the land disturbance of any kind, does that come down to planting roses and rottating your garden? It's land disturbance of any kind. That may be where we need to address it. I don't want to get a permit to plant a rose. Well, the deer would like the deer.
The person paragraph, it says that it's land disturbance associated with destruction, alteration, or replacement of any residential structure, or services or utilities.
In paragraph 1 under 141.003, prior to land disturbance of any kind, the responsible party shall contact the city and arrange for and attend an onsite pre-construction meeting with the city administrator, the city public court supervisor, and/or the city permit technician. Again, with all due respect, we already have that in place when we take out our permits. I do not want to kick the can down the road on this. I would request a vote.
Second. A vote on?
A vote on ordinance number 249.
And if that vote fails, does that preclude us from going back and doing some rewording on this and coming back to the council again?
I would not think so.
Ordinance 250.
Ordinance. You would have to go to public hearing then today, huh? As it is. It's scheduled for public hearing today.
Sure is.
I mean, discussion wasn't supposed to take place until after the public... But you could table, and that would kill it in effect. For massaging purposes.
We have a motion on the table now. To vote on.
To vote for ordinance number 249 as worded. My... I make that motion.
Second.
Okay.
I'm trying to clarify what it is. You're trying to pass it, you're trying to kill it, you're trying to...
Get a vote.
To...
To either yea or nay on ordinance 249 as worded.
Okay, got it. We have a second. All in second.
Mr. Martin.
Right. All in favor?
We need to vote.
Yep. All in favor?
To vote.
Right. In terms of this ordinance as passing into the...
As worded.
As worded. Well, since I think it needs some rewording, I will say no. Right, Tom?
No.
Sheldon?
I could live with some rewording.
Okay.
But I don't want to see it dropped.
No. No? No. Susan?
Why, I think there's drainage issues to be addressed. I do not think this is the property rule, so it's not.
Thank you. All right. Mayor, may I offer to Jamie that I would be happy to look at this with you if you would like a second set of eyes?
And I will ask Mr. Mortier, who tells me no, he does not, to tell me what it is he's looking at on your properties.
Right.
And I'd like to know when you had somebody come out to your property, Tom, that was a pre-construction meeting.
I've been told that people do show up, including yourself, as well as the public works directors.
That's not true.
Okay.
That's not true. Well, we may show up only if we've heard word of it, because I'm going out as code enforcement officer, to see who's doing work without a permit.
And that's the way it should be handled, on a per-case basis, but not a blanket ordinance that applies to everything.
All right, moving on.
The main's carried.
So now we're on to public hearing. The fee. Okay. So what we're looking at is a conditional use permit for hobby, beekeeping, R1 is up. Excuse me if I destroy your name. Robert Snellper?
Yes.
Did I get close?
No.
Good enough.
The script.
Okay.
There's things you have to say first.
Okay, I'm looking again. Notice 248, 249. 248, 249. Script of public hearing. Oh, yeah, in general, you're talking about the public hearing? Is that what you're talking about?
No, there should be a separate one for the conditional use permit.
This one, yes.
Yes.
Okay, got it. Yeah, I didn't say bee, I'll have to get down here. All right.
Just bend it.
Hang on to read the script.
Don't worry.
This evening, we'll have a public hearing on the request for a conditional use permit to raise honeybees in Dune City residential district as applied to by Sophia Beth Kerner. This proceedings will be recorded. These hearings will be held in accordance with the land use procedures required by the city and state of Oregon. This is a type three quasi-judicial procedure. Staff will identify the applicant submitted criteria, which have also been listed in the staff report. These are criteria the city council must use making a decision. All testimony and evidence must be directed towards this criteria or other criteria which you believe applies to this decision. To elevate a raised issue accompanied by the statements or evidence to the, for the city and parties involved in the opportunity to respond to the issue would preclude an appeal for the Oregon Land Use Appeals Board based on this issue. Any party interested in a land use matter may challenge the qualifications of a counselor or participant in such a hearing and decision. Such challenge must state facts relied upon by the party relating to the counselor's bias, prejudice, conflict of interest, or other facts from which party has concluded that the counselor will not make a decision in a partial manner. Does any counselor wish to declare conflict of interest, bias, or ex parte contact? In this meeting? Does any member of the public wish to challenge a counselor's impartiality? Now open the public hearing of the conditional use permit. It is 7:12 PM. Okay. Do we have a staff report relating to this, Jamie?
Yes, it's in your package.
This one, okay. Do you have any, does any, counselors have any questions of the staff versus the report that they've sent us? If not, we'll take testimony, we'll be taking testimony from all of those who wish to testify. If you have not already done so, please sign the sheet and include your name and mailing address. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes, limited to a total of thirty or forty minutes for the entire public input. Individuals making public comments are asked to refrain from duplicating comments made by prior speaker. Any person desiring to address the council by oral communications must address the entire council as a body and not as any particular member. Counselors may enter into a discussion with the person testifying, but no one else. Any audience is allowed to speak at that time. Questions, however, may be posed to staff and staff may respond. All questions posed are posed through the proceeding officer, proceeding officer. We'll now take testimony from the applicant.
It is you again.
Yes, my name is Robert Smelker. I'm representing my wife, Lynn Smelker, who's the owner of the neighboring property of the Kerners. We're opposed to the bees, but after reading the planning commission's report, which is pretty thorough, what we'd like to do is acquiesce on that issue and ask the council for a greater setback from the property line. The planning commission recommended a ten-foot setback of the bee hives from the property line. We'd like to get twenty. And we'd like to have the property line surveyed by a licensed surveyor. There's a couple stakes, but it's not adequate, in my opinion. Like to see some stakes closer together, more of them, as to where the barrier is going to be between the bees and the property line. And that's pretty much it.
Do you have any specific questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. It's, 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 it was from reading through this, and we may have further testimony which will clarify this. It was my understanding that placement had something to do with the morning sun and the distance from shrubs or something like that.
Yes.
I certainly, if there's, I mean, and I have, we have yet to hear testimony, but I'm just wondering if you are aware at this point of whether that setback could be increased without impacting the efforts that the bee owners-
Yeah, my belief is it can be, because the original bee installation was further than twenty feet from the property line.
Okay.
So that's the reason if it was okay in the first place, it'd probably be okay now.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have questions?
It sounds like possibly this needs to go back to the planning commission if he wishes to create a bigger barrier between his property and the proposed bee property.
Well, I don't know if it's- Can we recommend, I mean, if we vote on it, can we recommend the changes? Or do they have to go back?
It does not go back to the planning commission. You guys make the final decision.
Okay.
Is the twenty feet that I'm seeing here, the, the, there is more than twenty feet and buffering vegetation separating the hives location and the closest neighboring structure. So that's not the twenty feet you're talking about. You're talking about twenty feet from the property line as opposed to from your home.
Yeah, our dwelling is twenty-three feet from the property line, and then we have another twenty feet to the hives.
Yeah.
So there'd be a total of forty-three feet, I guess, from our dwelling to the property. Okay, or to the bee hive, right.
Great, thank you.
Surveying is a fairly expensive endeavor. Would you take a few more feet instead of surveying? I mean, that's really-
Well, we've had a problem with where the property line is. And so I'd like to make sure everybody knows where it is.
And is it the property owner that would, I mean, who pays for that survey, though?
Not my bees, so.
Okay, okay.
But you're disputing now the property line.
Well, the neighbor's not sure where it is.
Well, I think that needs to be addressed, apparently. The planning commission has approved, well, we look at the findings of fact, conclusions, and decision. Our planning commission has approved it as submitted. It did not come up, apparently, this property line discrepancy. I think we just need to move forward. May I take a vote?
Well, there's more testimony, I'm sure, so we may get some further information.
Any further questions for Robert, or Mr. Smelker?
Yeah, yeah, just, you want, just to clarify the issue of the property line. You want that survey specifically because of the bees, or that's an issue that needs to be settled anyway?
It needs to be settled anyway.
Okay.
And the bees are demanding it?
Buzzing about it, are they?
So to speak.
Then maybe we just need to move forward on this issue and to prove it as proposed. And then you take up your dispute on the property line. And if that needs to be moved one way or another, then the hives are going to have to be moved one way or the other.
Sure. Yeah, we're just looking for twenty foot. Yes, that's mine, thank you.
North up, okay.
That's the one.
Is it north up on the, I'm trying to reconcile-
Yeah, basically, we're on the north side of the current.
Okay. I'm trying to reconcile with this picture, so it's this way according to that one.
Okay.
So we have another drawing that says that you're about thirty feet from the site of your house, and you're wanting it before you freeze up.
Well, it's, yeah, the house is twenty-three feet from the property line. So even if the ten foot were approved, it would still be thirty-three feet, not thirty.
Okay, so you're discussing-
I'm wanting ten more feet.
You want ten more feet? I'm trying to understand what all these-
Well, no, I don't blame you.
And that's a concern that you have about whether the bees are going to be coming over to your property?
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, I'm thinking, Tom, that what you said is, I mean, again, we're not at a vote yet, but I'm thinking what you said, that then you will deal with the property line and de-simply approve it as related to whatever it is.
Surveyor's going to ascertain where the property line is.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
The professionals will be there to do that.
Okay, fair enough.
Anything else for Robert?
Oh, no, for me, no sir.
All right, thank you. Aaron Dollar? Oh, I already have. Do you want to hear from the applicant?
I'll give you now.
Right. Well, it's not on you. Oh, but yes, go ahead. Advocate, please.
Hi. I thought I didn't need to sign here.
Oh, okay.
I'm Beth Kerner, and I'm the one who's interested in the bees. I went ahead and filed all this because I was told it was necessary. And I'm all new to this, so if I step out of line, you'll let me know. I don't have any problem with the property being surveyed. Matter of fact, I just did it last week, and they came out and surveyed all the lines and made sure that we were on par. I am having a privacy fence or a large fence placed between what you see as the tall shrub there and the open space between the trees to create even a further barrier between the properties. So that really shouldn't be an issue at all. The bees themselves, when they leave the hives, they tend to go straight up and then disperse out. So there shouldn't be any issue whatsoever. If he wants a measurement from the property line, my figures aren't exact where it says thirty feet. It may be already sitting thirty feet from the property line. I had to estimate as I'm not allowed to go on that property. So I measured from my property line and then did an estimate to his, to his area. So it may be more, if they, where I list the bee shed at this time, it may be thirty-some feet or more at that, at this point. So that's, I have no problem with that issue. I may have to cut a small shrub down if he wants it three feet over or whatever. I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a lot of room to go that direction, to go over more, because I have large trees on the south side of my property that block a lot of that morning and mid-morning sun, which is kind of critical. They get the first morning sun up in the east, where you see where I'm drawing the little sun there. But as the sun moves into noon and everything, it was up here unblocked by a lot of trough tall trees there. So they, so if I move it over a little bit south, I think I'll be okay. I don't think I'll block too much sun, and I don't have any problem with that whatsoever. But as far as the survey line goes, I just had Wobee and Associates out last week. They have everything on file, and I called today for them to come mark off the property so I can have the fence built next week. So all that's in process. It just takes a little while to get these going around, because everybody's busy or half-retired or something like that. So, but that's, I don't have any problem with that whatsoever. And any questions?
Yeah, good to meet you.
I have a question.
Sure.
So if I'm understanding it correctly, you're not, Mr. Smelker asked for twenty feet from the property line, and you're saying that you don't think that's a problem?
No, I think it's already twenty feet from the property line. I don't think what Mr. Smelker was seeing where the bees were, he was seeing them in the raised beds when actually I have them where the bee shed is listed. The bee shed hasn't been built yet, because I'm trying to get a worker out to do that, and people seem pretty busy lately. So, and I want it built kind of specifically to where I can access them from all over and then shut it up at night to make sure that there's no critters getting in or anything like that. And so it's pretty specific, and, but I'm pretty sure that that's already thirty feet from the property line. I'm glad to have somebody come out and measure it. I don't have a problem with that. I'll measure it myself from the property line. There was an issue with where the property line was, but since I've had Wobee and Associates come out and look at it, or give me those lines, that's fine. And they're actually coming out when they return my call to mark the property line where I'm going to have my fence built, the privacy fence between the shrub and the trees here. They'll mark that for the person coming to build the fence. So when they do that, we can have them measure from the property line to where I'm going to have bees placed in the bee shed and make sure that that's thirty feet with, that he wanted, thirty feet, I don't have any problem. Twenty feet from the property line, I don't have any problem with that whatsoever.
I think it was twenty feet from the property line, and the house is twenty feet on the other side from the property line. That was the forty-three, is that?
Twenty-three feet.
No, I'm sorry, I meant twenty-three.
Yeah.
So that's a total of forty-three.
Okay, so it'd be twenty from his property line.
That's my, was it?
Okay, I think, I think if I do, where the bee shed is now is actually a little further than that, but we could double-check that definitely.
Okay.
So make sure it's at least twenty feet. At least twenty feet.
At least twenty, yeah. Could I just ask Mr. Smelker if that's, if that's, are we headed in the right? I mean, it sounds to me like there's an understanding here.
It sounds like it, yes. But our house is twenty-three feet from the property line. If we get another twenty to the hives, twelve to forty-three.
And that's what you're asking for, and that's what you're saying it can be, so I think-
Sure. As far as the property lines being surveyed, that was done already.
Yeah.
Bill, we can call the Wobees, have it sent out, but they've been there, they're coming. They should be coming out next week to mark for the fence.
Okay, good.
Did you lose your bee property?
I'm sorry?
Oh, survey, did you lose your bee property?
I think all the posts were where they were supposed to be, and they were right where they needed to be. Because I think he originally set the property lines in before the houses were built, so he kind of just split off the, that's my understanding.
Recommendation number five, the hives must be positioned so the opening is pointed into the beekeeping property. Now we're getting the rest of the information back here about healthy beekeeping. Need to face the sun. Is that going to be difficult?
No, the only difference from that recommendation to the picture that I had earlier with the bee shed is I would move them a little more easterly, sorry, no, more south, if you will. So I would just kind of cock-eye them this way. So they would, instead of facing directly east, they would be southeast. And that also goes on to, that's toward my property. That would be probably because that would actually follow the sun.
So that would still be within the statement here, that they would, basically, the entrance would be facing away from-
Right, instead of the bee shed being faced directly east, I would face it, I would south, southeast. Which I think is actually a little bit better for them anyway.
Mr. Smelker, you've requested a survey. It sounds like that's been done.
Yeah, I did see some stakes. The two pens are so far apart, it's kind of hard to tell. One's in the wetlands, and, you know, one's up the hill, and they're one hundred feet apart. So get some stakes closer. That'd be great.
And that's part of your plan, is that right?
Well, the surveyors that were out had difficulty getting to the actual stakes that exist because it is in a wetland, and they came out pretty stretched up. They did put flags around some trees and down into the bramble area. There are two stakes that are listed, that are clearly listed here and underneath the pine trees here. And when they come out to mark for my fencing, I will have them stake a little bit more clear there. And until it goes into the bramble here, it goes downhill, I can have them stake it down there too a little bit. But it's on hillside, it's pretty steep, and it's pretty rough.
Mr. Smelker, does what Ms. Kerner is saying about the stakes, does that meet your, with your request?
Sounds like it, yeah.
It does to me, too. I just want to make sure it sounds like that.
Yeah, I just want to see the stakes where the place is going to be as opposed to the levels.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any way to test-
Is there any, any way to test the motive? None, all right.
Page three of the script.
There, mark it. All right, we'll close the hearing at 7:31.
You need to ask the applicant if she wants to have her record held over and turn it link to time.
She's in the kitchen, no. All right, City Council, deliberation.
I think if we can, if we can clarify the issue of 20 feet as opposed to, and I don't know where the wording is from the, from the planning commission, I'd like to just find that if I could.
Okay.
If anybody can steer me in that direction, please do.
What's that?
Page eight of eight, findings of fact and conclusions.
Eight of eight, I'm on eight of eight, findings of fact and conclusions. And there's seven recommendations. And this said, let me see. Okay, parallel to the property line, it extends 10 feet beyond the colony in each direction unless a joint property is undeveloped. I'm, wait a minute. Is that what I'm, I just want to make sure that we've clarified that our approval is for at least a 20-foot setback from the property line as it is, as it is determined.
But that's not stated in the finding.
No, that's what I'm, that's what I'm.
But at this public hearing, it sounds like there was an agreement between Mr. Smelker and the applicant.
Yeah, I just, go ahead.
I would think we'd want to make a motion pursuant to the findings of fact and the all, the approval. Planning Commission's already approved this. I would make a motion to approve the permit as submitted and as approved by our planning commission.
And I'm suggesting that we amend that planning commission approval for the 20-foot setback, which I don't see in, in the planning commission's final recommendation here.
I agree. Can we add that?
Are we allowed to do that?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, parties agree, so.
Yeah.
Well, it says 25 feet here.
Well, isn't that the same?
It says unless the adjoining property is undeveloped, you need a minimum, which is, it is developed, so you need 25 feet past the property line.
I don't think that's referring to what we're talking about.
Yeah, that's kind of the direction.
Yeah, it's, it sounds like that's.
So far as the.
So, Councilor Mellon, would you want to withdraw that motion for now?
So that it can be?
I, yes, I, we can withdraw it. Then I would make a motion to approve the permit as approved by the planning commission, but with the setback being 20 feet from the newly surveyed property line pursuant to the agreement of the parties, then they have to agree.
Second.
I believe we have our planning commission chair here if we'd like to get a clarification from her.
I'd be happy to speak to that.
Please.
Which is, we very carefully considered the property lines and the issues all of the residents raised, and we felt that the issue of 25 feet past the property line applied to every property line unless it's undeveloped on that quadrant. So the request to have the bee colony setback 20 feet is certainly within the 25 feet. In other words, we've already addressed the solution.
Yeah, that's what I wondered, is that, so what Councilor Snow is saying is you had already said 25 feet.
Correct.
And, and we're saying, okay, so.
And you're saying 20 feet, and we say, well, you're going to have 25 feet.
Okay. So do we, do we need to then make it a minimum?
Well, we've got a 20.
Yeah.
We have a question, yes.
When we read that, it was hard for us to understand what was meant.
Me, too.
We weren't able to go to the meeting. So I'll take 25 feet.
Okay.
That would be fine.
Super. Yeah. Yeah, that's not how I read it, but if you take the verbiage and listen to it and then put it in that context, then it sounds right. Ms. Kerner, do you think that changes where your position is?
I, you know, I don't know.
Okay.
Because at one point, you know, I run into a tree.
Right, I understand.
So it's, it's questionable. I was fine with the 20 feet to put a resolution to all this, but once the surveyors come out and actually measure it off with their exact instruments, I don't think that there will be an issue with that at all. I just may lose a nice tree.
I, I, yeah. Go ahead.
Hi.
This is Lynn Smelker, the property owner.
Okay.
I was under the impression when I met with Ms. Mills that they could put it at 10 feet from our property line.
Oh, that's.
And so that's where the, and that was really close to us.
Yeah, true.
So that's where the confusion is. And then when I read the information here, I didn't understand that at all. And we would like to have it as far away from the property as possible.
Sure.
And that's what happened. I was told that they could have it even 10 feet, and I'm like, so, and then I read that, and it was totally confusing.
So it sounds to me like we're off of an agreement here for about, by a feet.
If, if we could clarify at a minimum of 20, I think that would satisfy everybody.
I would love that.
And we have a motion in a second.
Would you go, would you go for 20?
If it's an accurate 20.
Excellent, yeah, excellent. All right, we have a motion and a second.
And a second.
To add 20 feet, which would be number eight.
What do you need? You got it?
Any further discussion? I hope not, because the bees are going to bed.
No, I just didn't want her to have to move a tree, so as close as she can get, I don't think she should have to take a tree down.
Yeah, all right. All right, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed?
No.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
I think we just learned a lot about bees.
We did.
Not a bad thing, no.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Absolutely, it's a little air force.
All right. Now, we can get back to the logic? Yep. All right, resolution series 2018, number six. Number six, 0613, 2018, resolution adopting the 2018-19 fiscal year budget. I'll open the agenda item for public comment at 7:40. Is there any public comment on our budget?
No one signed up.
All right, okay.
Mayor?
Yes?
I will recuse myself if that is not a budget need.
Okay.
Now, we meant to talk to you about.
I missed it also.
It's all here.
That's right.
It's all there.
It's right in front of you.
Yep. I'm now closing the public comments period at 7:41. Let's save this for the sake of argument. I'm now going to entertain a motion to adopt resolution 2018, number six, six, or 06-13-2018. I have one. And second, we need a roll call on this one.
Uh, no, you don't really, but I will.
I mean, that's a, it's a call.
Councilor Moore?
Aye.
Councilor Mountain?
I have recused myself.
I don't quite understand that, but okay. Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
Councilor Montgomery?
Aye.
Councilor Snow?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, and budget pass. Resolution referring to the voters of Dune City, a major for adoption of an amendment to section 21 of Dune City Charter so as to allow the city to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with municipal judge services. I'm now opening this agenda item for public comment, 7:45.
There's no comment for that one.
Okay, that makes that simple. Audience will close it at the same time. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Sorry, any discussion?
Yes.
Please.
Jamie, could you clarify the, the known or speculated costs of doing this? Does this, is this someone who would come in on demand or come in once a month or once a week or?
I haven't even looked at him.
So this is, what we're approving here is conceptual as opposed to specific?
Not specific, not really.
Pardon?
Not really.
No, thank you.
Right, now, the way our charter is written right now, we are, in order to have a municipal judge, they have to meet right here. And if that were to happen, we would have to have, a separate meeting room is not that hard to handle. You just make sure that nobody else is going on, that no other meetings going at the same time. But you have to have a separate place to store all files, locked up, and we would have to pay a bailiff as well. So our hands are tied in being able, if I need to go for code enforcement action, I have to go to Eugene to do it. I have to make a trip to the Eugene courts and, and ask for relief that way. This would allow a circuit judge, for lack of a better term, the one that comes to Florence already, for us to enter into an agreement for that, for him to come here and have court here for us, or hold the court there where he is in Florence already using those facilities.
Typically, what will happen is they'll hold the court there because they have all the records and all the documents in Florence, and all the fines are relative. I believe it's a 60-40, they get 60, we get 40, or it may even be, that's been a long time ago, so it may be higher. The, the issue at hand is that right now, if we, somebody finds somebody in the city for, you know, some infraction, and they have like not to pay it, it doesn't get paid.
Yeah, okay.
All right. So my thought on the topic is that a small percentage of something is better than, you know, 100% of nothing that's happening right now. And what happens, it actually puts teeth into our, into our ordinances.
Mayor, is it only code enforcement issues? What type of issues? I was wondering, would this be?
Jamie, I'm thinking it's mostly court with code enforcement, but is there other issues we need to take in front of the judge?
No, usually, no, it's all court, usually code enforcement, nuisances, you know, whatever's under our nuisance code, violations with regard to septic, possibly. Usually, we can, we've built a lot of flexibility into that so that there's some options. Most of the others, there's flexibility built in to where we can, I can sit down, if they will sit down with me, talk about how an issue can get resolved and to everybody's satisfaction. But when I don't have any response, or I have the kind of response where, oh, yeah, I'll do it, and then they don't, or any of those where they actually bullface lie, which they have done, in order to do anything, I have to travel to Eugene and get a judge to enter whatever it is I got to have him enter over there. And I can enter fines now, but I can't collect them, I can't assess them. That's, that's the problem. I have the authorities put in for the officer to, to assess fines and penalties. I don't have the authority to place the lien without court approval. So that's what it would be, is a placement of lien on the property.
Jamie Florence has a judge from Superior Court, is that correct?
Comes in three times a day, or three times a week.
Okay. That's seven miles away, roughly, or eight miles. And I, I see that as being the venue at this point, rather than pay a bailiff to be here, et cetera, et cetera. I think that's crazy. Again, it comes down to staffing and money. And if there is a way to get it to Florence so that you do not have to go to Eugene, then I would propose that their infrastructure is already in place, and that's what we need to produce.
That's what we need to do.
Right, and the problem is, it is the charter, the city's charter, that mandates that court be held in this building by a municipal judge. And so the proposal before you is whether to refer the matter to, because to amend the charter, you have to send it to the voter people. So if you want to refer the question to the people, and the question is what's in the resolution and what's in the ballot title?
Without question, correct.
I need approval, something, if I send it to voters.
Actually, don't we have a, a motion and a second already?
Yes.
Yeah.
We're in discussion.
Yeah.
One thing that I don't like on this, and I'm just looking at way down the road in all the bad movies I've seen, where the court is moved to Portland and nobody can afford to go, I would like to see a, something limiting it to within 15 miles or Florence specifically.
The possibility lies that Florence could pull their judge. I mean, that is a possibility. As it is, they had to, one retired, and now this person is doing both of those. So for that court to move out of this town would be, I can't even imagine what would cause that to happen. But if it did, everybody in Florence, everybody here to fight a traffic ticket is going to Eugene anyway. So, you know, it's, I, I can't imagine how that would happen.
I was thinking more along the lines of venue shopping. It's, well, with rentals, a friend of mine had some rentals years ago, and in order to get a bad renter out, they would take them to court in Eugene. They'd never show up. They won all the time.
Oh, I see what you mean. However, this, what this does is this allows the public to vote on the fact of changing the charter, right? Because the charter right now restricts us to here.
Yes.
So.
And expanding to Florence is great.
Right. Yeah.
Expanding to Portland is not, and there's a limit to expanding to Portland, as this is read. I don't ever foresee that happening, but I've seen that one, movies in the cells with the bad sheriff and the bad judge, the dukes' ass, or try to eat them at their own game.
I'm not positive that isn't a, that isn't a state or local county issue.
Okay.
I'm just not positive.
The proposed language starts, the first sentence is, "The city council may appoint and renew a municipal judge." So you can, the city council would be, if they're not happy with the way things are going, they can terminate it anytime according to the charter.
But it's either venue shopping or.
It would have to be the same judge that was appointed for everything, so that kills that. You're right, yeah, okay. Thank you for your explanation.
Any objections? No. Time to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none, it passes.
Resolution number eight, or, sorry, number eight. Resolution calling for election within the city of Dune City, referring to the voters, a major imposing a five-year local option levy to fund general city operations, setting the rate of said local option levy at one-half cent per thousand at assessed valuation and adopting a ballot, ballot title.
Mayor, might I suggest before we get into this that. Mayor, might I suggest before we get into this, that we have, I believe, a two-hour specified time limit and we might, we don't?
I think I put nine o'clock on it.
Oh, did you put nine? Okay, that's fine.
So we'll open this agenda to the public comment at seven fifty.
Jamie, it's my understanding that this is being proposed to us so that we can then participate in funds that we know that at present we do not, or do not participate in. Or are we just establishing some sort of precedent by having this taxation? In order to participate in other things?
That's a complicated question, and there is a process that has to be followed. Get to staff report, if you, have you already there?
No, no, the master staff report says if anyone in the audience would like to comment on the resolution.
Well, I can answer this question.
I'll answer the question, so that it gives a little clarity to everybody.
All right, for everybody that's here. Currently, in order to receive the shared rep tax revenue, that would be cigarette tax, liquor tax, and your gas taxes, the city has to have levied a property tax.
Oh, no, we give it to our people.
There are other shared revenues as well, but those are the three biggies that come to mind for me. There are only a couple of cities in the whole state that don't have a property tax, and Dune City is one of them. And by a couple, I mean two. And so I think we've just kind of been flying under the radar screen a little bit here because we have not, we have been receiving those funds, but we do not assess the tax. And so that is a violation, and there is, our attorneys have advised that perhaps we need to correct this immediately. And so that's why I brought the issue to the city council, and I said, well, you know, we don't really want to assess the tax, and so that's where they came up with a half a cent. So that, you know, something very, very minimal, just so we can say, yes, we assess a property tax, give us the money our people pay you already. Your gas taxes, your liquor taxes, and your cigarette taxes, and whatever this other pot of money is. I get letters that tell me how much these other cities are getting for this other pot of money, but we're never on the list to get any of that money because we don't have a tax. And, and so that's what all this was all about, that's how the whole conversation came up.
And what, this came up, this came up at the budget meeting, by the way. And this was a budget meeting, asked us to take the question up. Because of the funds that we're not getting and the funds we may not get in the future because we are not, we're not taxing, the conversation was, what is the lowest possible thing that we could tax, apply to a property tax that would be accepted by the state and the agencies that give us this money? So we came up with half a cent, which brings in twelve hundred dollars a year for the entire city. Because the taxation is so low. But I'm not doing it for the money, but, but what it means is seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars a year in these other benefits, so that, you know, so the payoff was, was great, but trying to get the word out to what this really means and how miniscule it is, is difficult. Especially when you first do the math and go, oh, did I divide or did I multiply? And you're not paying four thousand dollars a year for your property tax. Anyway, let's get back on script here. Rory? And just to, just so it's clear, Rory is part of the budget committee.
I'm actually the one who made the motion.
So blame him.
Well, thank him.
Or thank him, it depends on how it comes back.
Taxes are a slippery slope, and I fear overregulation, I fear great governmental bureaucracies that grow, I, I fear overzealous code enforcement, I fear high taxes. And this state has a culture that government knows best, and frankly, it doesn't. My favorite saying is that, there are a hundred ways to do things and ninety-seven of them are right. Government ordinances and regulations need to take that into consideration in this diversity. I believe in local control, and I feel that taxes will do more good, that, that this tax will do more good to help the Dune City residents than hurt them. In fact, the reason why we have to do this tax is because we have a, a really bureaucratic, overzealous way of doing things. I mean, there's all these exceptions and things, and it's too bad that we have to do this because if you think about it, it costs the state more to figure this out and things of that sort, so. But it's the only way we can get around it, and I do fear, I don't want to, I don't want to see this as the start of a huge property tax increase and things like that because it's unnecessary. And so that's really all I have to say, and I think it's the right thing to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jared?
Thank you. I would like to speak for this, I think that this, this is, this is a great idea, like, one of my questions was, what kind of funding would we see from this tax, and you explained that it would be, I forget, you said about how much?
It was, what, eighty to a hundred thousand dollars, Jamie?
Well, yeah.
It fluctuates because of the different amount of tax that the state gets.
Okay, and is that over that five-year period, or are we talking, that's annual?
Annual.
Okay, so that's annual. And is it based on the amount, I mean, it doesn't sound like it's actually based on the amount of tax collected, it's just that there has to be some sort of
Exactly.
collected, okay, in order to qualify for this.
True.
Okay, and if we, you know, we go ahead with this, and again, like I said, I have no opposition to this whatsoever, how, when would that actually start, and from that point, when do we actually see a benefit? In other words, do we need to collect tax for a full year, and then the following year, are we funded? How does that work?
May I answer?
Please.
Thank you. Tonight, the council adopted the resolution that says that we provide the forced municipal services, but we have to admit in that that, that we don't have a tax, that we don't collect a tax. We reluctantly not included that somewhere in the past, the city has not included that in that resolution. Now we would be able to say we do, and that would be effective July one, two thousand nineteen.
July one, two thousand nineteen, okay, so about a year.
Yes, it passes.
Yeah, it passes, okay. And do you, as the mayor and council, have an idea of how that money might be used? Or is that just a pot of money to say, okay, well, you know, we need to have, I know we're getting a water system, we have a water upgrade, that's, that's in the process of happening now. I'm not sure where that funding came from.
That's not.
That's different.
That's different money, that's private.
That's a, oh, that's from, okay, that's from South West Florida, okay, that's fine.
And grant funding agency.
So I guess, yeah, I, I
Can I explain?
Yeah.
Okay, cigarette taxes doesn't come with any, any directions on how to use it. Liquor tax doesn't currently come with any directions on how you can use it. The gas taxes come, we have to use it on, well, one percent of it has to go to hiking and biking trails, and the rest of it has to be used on road-related activities. That's what has been paying for any pavements or repairs or brushing that has happened in the years.
Okay, so, all right, well, that
The other pot of money, I don't know, because I don't know where it is, I don't know where it comes from.
Right, okay.
I don't know what kinds of strings.
Okay, so, but basically, is, is that if we do this, the city would be flush, for, for the terms of, of better, right, okay, all right. There would be extra cash, how about that, to, to work with? Again, I'm just kidding, you know, wondering if anybody given consideration, not for the gasoline tax, right, but for our property tax, you know, where that money might go. That's, that's all I had to ask, very much.
Mayor, I'm not, there might be some confusion here, and I'm not sure. The eighty to a hundred thousand that we have been getting and want to continue to get is contingent upon passage of, or having some tax. And that money has already been folded into the budget in past years and will continue to be, assuming that this passes and we continue to get that money. The money that we're getting from the actual tax is so small, it's hardly noticeable.
No, that's not what I was, I, I, that's not what I was referring to, I was referring to the, the money that we would start to get, unless I'm
Continue to get.
Or continue, or continue, well, okay, I'm confused, I'm confused.
That's what I was concerned about.
This is not, this is not new money, this is an opportunity to continue to get the money that we've been getting without having a property tax in Dune City.
Massages.
It was going white, we were gonna lose it.
We're gonna lose it if we don't pass it.
Oh, all right, okay, yes, that's fine, thank you very much for clarifying.
We would be not flush, we would be in deep trouble if we lost that eighty to a hundred thousand.
Yeah, flush being a relative term, I understand, thank you very much.
Thank you, yeah, good point, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Can I ask for a question?
Sure.
Jamie, on here it says this measure may cause property taxes to increase more than three percent. I didn't understand that statement.
I don't mean, that's a required statement and to be placed on there. The way I understand it, the schools have a certain amount that they can assess, and then all of the other governments have ten percent. And, you know, I, I guess the state law prohibits it from going up over three percent, you know, without some kind of special thing.
That's very confusing.
It is very confusing, but it's required language, you know, I can't change that, it's, it's required language to be in there.
Were you already paying that property tax to the state? Were we paying, everybody pays property tax to the state, it can't be raised every year higher than three percent. The city has never been involved in property tax. So whatever the state does is one thing, what the thing that we do is the half a cent. So two, two different, two different taxing agencies.
I understand that, I just didn't, I'm asking about the exception, she answered it.
I see.
I just wanted that clause.
I had, I had to check to make sure that there was room for the city to come back with our little half a cent in the ten percent that was there, that's set aside just to governmental entities, to make sure that it fit.
My other question is, is there a reason, or can we put in the amount of money that we would continue getting so that in the summary for the November election, that people understand this half-cent tax would bring in a large sum of money?
Possibly, we're restricted to a hundred and seventy-five words. And so, and some of them are mandated, mandated, I can't cut out the mandated part.
One hundred and fifty-eight?
No, that's what that means, there can be a little bit to play with. And so there is a little room there, because I think there's only a hundred and forty there, so I think there's a little room to play with. I know, we know how much, it would, then it would click and go, oh, if I'm paying this, I pay, you know, a buck and a half, two bucks, I'm going to get this one.
The advantage, yeah.
Yeah, it's got to be very well worded. Very well worded. Or are we restricted from sending that? I mean, I know that when we put, when we make resolutions to put things on the ballot, that we can't go out and promote that.
That's correct.
Is there a way to do it without promoting it? I mean, is there a way to say, give strict information as to how that works?
I believe the press would be, that would be, we hope that our reporters are very good.
Yeah.
Oh, I believe that you, for issues on the ballot, people can submit letters pro and con, is that right, Jamie?
That's true.
Costs like a hundred and seventy-five. And in this case, you might want to authorize a committee, or a committee might be formed of concerned citizens to put forth this case clearly, so that the citizenry understands the importance to their local government.
That's good, yeah.
I have lived in Dune City since two thousand, and, and the city has been getting along just fine without having any sort of, sort of tax. That's beside the point right now. There are statutes that we must follow if we want to do what you're talking about doing. And I don't know if that has all been investigated and we are in compliance with, with the statutes when we're doing this.
Right, it does have to go to a vote of the people, and that's what the consideration is tonight, is it has to go to the vote of the people. It has to, we can't talk about it, once, once the referral to the ballot is made, the city can't discuss it, we can't advocate one way or another. We do, we did have to draft the ballot title and that sort of thing, that's included on the back of this, on the, the caption, the question, and the summary. That is how it could appear on the ballot. And yes, I've been working closely with the Lake County Assessor's Office on this and with our legal counsel.
I just wanted to be sure that we're
He's right, it's quite, it is complicated, it's very complicated. Getting quite the education.
Yeah, I'm a little concerned with this, of course, is creeping taxes, but this is a levy, so it's set. The voters would have to renew it.
Right, for five years.
Yeah, so.
I'm hoping something happens in the next five years.
I'm feeling fairly confident about it. Can I make a motion?
Sure. As long as the audience is, any other comments?
Yeah, I'll make a, um, personal comment here. Which is, I view this group as democracy in action, and that our citizenry wants to see it working. But in the same way, we have to have some funding for this group, we can't, we have electricity bills to pay, we have staff of everything else, and what you get for nothing is not enough. So we are currently at risk of losing between eighty and a hundred thousand dollars a year, which is the only way that this group even scrapes by now. So if you came to me and said, are you willing to invest up to five dollars a year so that the city can continue to operate, I get eight hundred to a hundred thousand dollars a year, I would say that's the best investment opportunity I've heard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I make a motion to you?
There's already a motion on the table?
There was.
I thought you were in discussion.
Oh, we were in discussion.
Mayor?
Yes.
I think it needs to be clear that the limit on this tax, that there is a limit, and it sounds like being levy, to some extent, there's a limit. I have known very few property taxes that have not gone up, and my concern is that this just goes nuts. I don't think the present administration in Dune City has any intent of doing that, but it just needs to be drafted such that it, it sounds like we found a loophole, Rory found the loophole or whatever.
I just made a motion.
Therefore, we solve this problem, this money being taken away from us, but I, let's just keep it where it is, if we can, at a half a cent per thousand. That's my only concern.
Well, it's set there for five years, and then we have to have a new rhythm if we were gonna change.
Right.
Or we just, we'll have to be in a So I think that, I think it's set, it's done, that this is all we're ever gonna charge because
At least for five years.
At least for five years and
That's how I see it, yeah. All right, we'll now close the public comment at eight, ten. And we have a motion and a second, and we have a vote, a roll call vote, actually.
Let's go this way. Councillor Snow?
Yes.
Councillor Montgomery?
Yes.
Councillor Meyer?
Counselor Meyer?
Absolutely, yes.
Counselor Wallen?
Yes.
Counselor Ohr?
Yes.
All right. Does it pass? Thank you very much. Good discussion. Clarity is important on this one, so I think it's still going to take a bunch of us to sit down and try to wordsmith some things that comes out so everybody fully understands what's going on with it. But thank you for tolerating the time and the conversation. It's not easy. Okay, E.
E and F on session table.
Oh, that's right. All right.
They're gone.
All right, there we go. All right, moving down into reports. Mayor's report. I don't actually have anything except, are you going to go over some of the, Jamie, are you going to talk about the meeting coming up later in July?
Yes.
Okay, all right, then I'll do that one. All right. Community center, well, Mr. Wells is gone, Council Wells is gone, water quality, or Council Meyer?
Well, the tests are still positive. We're lucky to not live in Salem.
Yeah. However.
They didn't send us any wine?
Really concerned about it, because they lowered the blueberry algae levels.
I know, I know. It's going to be harder.
It starts getting hot. Everybody go out there and blow and stir the water.
Would you blow that? How it works, Jamie?
Well, mostly we're working on Huckleberry, and there is some cleaning and brushing going on right now.
Okay.
My report, I'm not going to dwell too much on the emergency report, other than I'm glad Mr. Pine is gone, but it did have him there about the upcoming field day. I do encourage people to go, it's really very interesting, the things that they can do. Moving on to my report, we had six buildings from this issued in May. The triathlon had about 200, I've got 275 in the, in the report, but it was closer to 250 by the time it resolved with new, and those that didn't show and that kind of thing. The CIC continues its work on 155. The planning commission held the same conditional use permit public hearing. Next planning commission meeting will be June 28 at 5 o'clock. Most of the complaints have been with regard to noise associated with tree and brush cutting. What people need to know is that Dune City's ordinance precludes loud noises after 7 o'clock, and by, the noise is defined as being able to travel beyond your property line after 7 o'clock. So please remember, it's 7, not 8. A lot of people can say it, but it's not at 7.
7:00 P.M.
7:00 P.M. 7:00 A.M., 7:00 P.M. The, oh, I'm told about the water conservation, management conservation plan has gone to the state for review and approval. And we are preparing requests for quotes for widening Huckleberry and installing the stormwater drainage. It's not really much of a widening. We just need to clear it out a little bit and add, and restore some drainage facilities that have now been filled back, filled in over the years, and clean out some stuff. And let's see, we're moving forward with the installation of the water measurement device at glowing creek. And I have a whole lot for good, go to the order.
Go.
On July 26, Dune City will be hosting the mayors of Lake County for their annual meeting for dinner. So first order of business is, our resolution and procedures prohibit any alcohol on the property.
Then why are we having a meeting?
So I would like to request permission to be able to serve wine to the attendees of the meeting.
Well, we need to hold it at Darling's, I guess.
I would just like to put bottles of wine under it.
Does anybody have a problem with that?
Would that include beer also?
Well, no, I'm not asking for beer. I'm just asking for wine.
Does it preclude beer?
Yes, it does preclude.
Oh, it does.
Yeah, there is no alcohol, alcohol beverages allowed on the property. Okay. Unimproved roadways, you know, we've been grappling with this whole issue of unimproved roadways and how much they're worth and what do you sell them for. The appraiser who did the appraisal for the hiking and biking trail said for $5,000, he can come up with a matrix that I can use to determine the value of each property based on where it's located and how much land is encompassed in it. And so he's requesting to do that for $5,000. I don't know where else to go. He's the only appraiser I've been, appraiser to find out, I've been able to find that would even consider doing anything like this.
Let me ask a question. As this property was given to us by the county, the appraisal of said property, since the property tax is going to be split between the two owners of the property if you vacate a road, or if the one owner doesn't want it, then the other one takes the entire additional property tax into that. Are we surveying to find out what the county is going to say what that land is worth? Are we surveying the city to use it as a tool to sell that to several property owners, something that has been given to us?
The appraisal would be for us to offer it to the property owners.
Okay.
Whoever may be interested in it. That's what, and if you choose to set a different rate now, rather, or in the near future, rather than having it appraised, that's okay, too. I just need to know what that rate's going to be.
Okay. Appraisers, yeah. Is this a local appraiser? Florence?
No.
No?
No. None of them would touch it. I started there, and then I gradually went bigger and bigger. I think this guy's a new dean or Cuse Bay.
Cuse Bay typically is, the people that have appraised the properties that I have purchased, come out of Cuse Bay, and I got to tell you that I don't think they quite fully understand our narrative compared to the narrative of Cuse Bay.
I agree. I am experienced personally with those people, and they absolutely do not understand values in Dune City, particularly lakefront properties. It just doesn't make any sense.
Well, I would appreciate it, rather than spending, dishing out $5,000, that you guys come up with a rate and tell me what you think it might be worth, so that we can move forward on this.
I think that that's not a bad situation. Can we do it like a special meeting where we can sit down, bring the public in, get people's opinion on it, sit around, and then we can come up with a decision?
Do a work session.
Do a work session so that, you know, because there's going to be a lot of people in Dune City that even, may not even know that there's that opportunity for them right now.
Correct.
You know, because these are unimproved roads, and if you haven't looked at a map to see where those roads go, you may not even know that you're adjoining a non-vacated road. A lot of them have actually been used over many, many years, since it was platted in 1909 or whatever it was. So I think it would be interesting to get the public's opinion, get some awareness out there of what properties we're talking about, so everybody knows.
Good idea.
Jamie, do you have a rate, approximate rate in mind to help with that? Any idea? So this would be something like decided.
Yeah, I think so.
I mean, the only thing I would request is that you make sure the city gets reimbursed for any costs associated.
Oh, absolutely, sure. Yeah, you've got, yeah, you can't just give the property. I mean, there's so much paperwork involved in it, it's unbelievable.
Right. Okay, I will work on scheduling that.
Thank you.
Our next item is, legal organ cities sent a survey, a paid survey, which we should have up there.
Yeah.
If you would please, they want us to identify the top four items. If you would please take some time to do that, get back to me and let me know. I have starred some of the ones that I think are important to us. One would be, of course, the tobacco, we'll be talking about the tobacco tax share interest. The proposal is to make it more equitable. The part about the small cell deployment is kind of scary, so you might want to read that. Of course, third-party building inspection, we all know, that's been a much one that's Oh, the part about paying for surveyors and engineers and architects, city's requirement that they have to go with the, they have to go with somebody who's qualified and not pay any attention to price, that also is kind of scary.
Yeah, it's hard to take it to good business.
And then there is a move now to preempt local authority to manage its public rights of waste, and so that was another one that I felt might be kind of important. So anyway, if you would read through those and tell me your top four, so I can fill this in and send the survey by, I'd appreciate it. Also, you should have a copy of the U.S. Department of Justice, and that's the United States Department of Justice, opinion recently issued regarding enforcing federal marijuana laws in the state of Oregon. That should be up there. As well as, the OLCC is not currently moving, prioritizing issuing new licenses for marijuana businesses. They're prioritizing, checking to make sure that current ones are compliant. And that's all I had on good of the order. Thank you for approving the one. I'm going to need it that time.
What's good of the order? I would just like to echo Mayor, what you said a little while ago about appreciating the fact that our citizens come out to meetings. Thank you all for being here, and I think this has been a very interesting and productive meeting, and I like the fact that there's give and take, and people are listening to each other, and decisions are made that seem to be resolving issues, and I've just appreciated this evening very much. Counselor?
No.
I'd like to mention that Darling's Resort on June 30 is putting on their fireworks display. They don't want to be involved in conflict with the fireworks done in Florence that are always on the Fourth of July, so they're always going to try to do theirs a Saturday or Sunday, whatever, Saturday event, before the Fourth of July, depending on how the calendar works, so that they're not in conflict. Those typically go off around 10 o'clock at night, and so far, they have paid for this themselves with some contributions. The city, we give them about $300 or $500 a year to help. It's a lot more expensive than that. They're taking up donations, so please, if you have the ability, drop them a couple dollars to help them out. I'd like to see this continue. It's a good draw for our city. Counselor?
I think that we should have a requirement that there be a bathroom break during the meetings.
Well, yeah, now that you mention it.
I agree with Counselor Ohr, and it's good to see people here and working together.
Yes.
All right, then entertain the motion. So. Second. Any discussion? All in favor? I have eight votes. Hey, Jerry? Thank you very much for coming. I always appreciate the folks being here.